Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting. This is meeting number 2022-22. It is Tuesday, December 13th, 2022, and it is 7:30 p.m. Roll call, please.
Mayor Boarder.
Present.
Trustee Mallow.
Here.
Trustee Oliniechak.
Here.
Trustee Stalker.
Here.
Trustee Desmond.
Here.
Trustee Sack.
Here.
Trustee Pembroke is absent.
We have a quorum. Please join me for the Pledge Allegiance Veterans. First responders may salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, do we have some public comments tonight?
We do. Elijah Paul is first.
Please step up to the podium, sir. Give us a... Are you an Oklaun resident?
My name's Aleah, and I'm a...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, step up to the podium so you can hear.
Okay.
Okay. Again, your name, and are you an Oklaun resident?
My name is Aleah, and I'm a resident of Oklaun.
Thank you.
I just had a question. If I wanted to propose something, how many si... Anything, how many signatures would I need to, like, bring that to you guys? Like, any... Anything at all? If I was, like, oh, this is a good idea, and I wanted to ask people about it if they thought it was a good idea, how many signatures would I need?
Well, I don't believe you need any signatures to bring a proposal or concept or idea to the Village Board. I would suggest that perhaps first you might want to contact your trustee, okay, and propose a... And share with him your thoughts.
Did you change districts?
Where do you live at, sir?
Um, on the corner of 109th and Trip would be my address.
Well, you're in District 6.
Okay.
So you would contact trustee Ralph Sack here.
Thank you.
Reference to your idea. And his phone number and availability is on the Village website.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
That's all I had to ask.
All right, well, thank you, sir.
I'm a woman.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, no problem.
Do we have another?
Next is Father Dennis Ziamac from St. Catherine's.
Father Dennis, how are you? St. Catherine's Parish. I know you live in Oklaun, Father.
I do, and I am the pastor of St. Catherine of Alexandria, and I'm also the dean for the parishes in Oklaun and also the surrounding parishes. And I wanted to come here today just to offer up a Christmas prayer for everybody. And I have no business other than to pray. And I'd also like to, first of all, thank... Thank our firefighters, our police officers, our medical personnel, particularly those working in the emergency rooms, for all the service that they give to our community, of which I think we are all grateful for. And as we look forward to the celebration of Christmas, I would like to offer up the following prayer behalf of all the parishes in Oklaun. Father, I pray that you will turn our hearts to you as Christmas approaches. Let us not get caught up in the hustle and bustle of the season this year and miss the chance to celebrate the gifts of hope, peace, joy, love that you sent to us on that first Christmas. That first Christmas, you gave us the gift of hope wrapped in swaddling clothes and laid in a manger. Father, thank you for your immeasurable gift of Jesus. Emmanuel, God with us. We make this prayer through Christ our Lord. Amen. And a blessed Christmas and a happy new year to you and your families.
Thank you, Father. Appreciate that. All right, we move on to number four, Conflict of Interest. Any trustee have any conflict with any of the items on the agenda tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on to the approval of the regular meeting minutes of 2022-21 dated November 22nd, 2022. Motion?
Motion.
Do you have motion to approve?
A second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Motion approved. New business by trustee. District 1?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, other than wishing everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, I have no other new business.
Thank you, trustee. District 2?
Yeah, I just want to give a quick update. The weather's been good so far, and Central and Southwest Highway construction projects being along. Um, I know that it looks like Bill, they should be out of that intersection if weather keeps up within the next month.
Alex, that's correct. We're planning on being done mid-January.
Excellent. We're all looking forward to that because some people do not understand no left turn and a lot of horns and salutations going on on that corner. But I... I'm glad that the weather's moving along and the construction crew is moving along. And then all I'd like to wish everyone is a Merry Christmas and a happy, healthy new year. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. District 3, trustee Mallow.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, I echo those same comments. Merry Christmas to everyone, our staff, everyone on the board, and hopefully everyone has a safe and half... A healthy new year. Secondly, the... I just wanted to make mention condolences to our sister town, hometown next to us, Kevin Casey, unfortunately passing away on last Friday. So condolences to the family of, you know, Kevin Casey.
Thank you, trustee. District 5?
Uh, yeah, I'd just like to add to the comments. I really appreciate the hard work that the office staff, the Police and Fire Department, the physical staff of the Village of Oklaun do. It's such a great community to live in. I hope everybody in the community has a great Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. District 6?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to give an update on the potential flood mitigation project that we've been talking about at the pie fields at 109th and Kilpatrick. If you can recall, we presented preliminary ideas to District 218 back in October of 2021. We now have some preliminary data and a plan that could allow us to retain 15 to 20 million gallons of water during heavy rains. And MWRD has committed as much as 50% of the construction cost for that. The mayor, myself, and our engineer and reps from MWRD will be presenting our follow-up plan to the 218 Board this Thursday. So I just wanted to give the update on that. And I also... I wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and thank you to our first responders, our police and fire that'll have to work over those holidays. Let them know that we... They are much appreciated, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. A lot of work went into hopefully getting this retention pond over there, and that'll really help the residents in your district with these 50-year floods every five years.
Amen.
Mayor, if I could just add on that, this project's been a combined effort from this board in looking at the best use of the monies, and especially in an area that is heavily impacted, which borderlines on trustee Stalker's area, which we have other plans that are going to be going in. But this isn't just a one-part process. This is a multi-part process. But this is one that shovels are ready. All we need are the approvals, and we can start moving on it. And it will help all the other areas downstream from there. So we're really looking forward to the whole project getting green-lighted by that school board.
Thank you, trustee. Thank you. Village managers report.
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. And I'm going to move on to the consent agenda.
Sorry, Mayor. We just have one item outside of the consent agenda.
Yes.
You want to just move it up and we get...
Which one is that?
Uh, 9 and... 9 and 10. It's going the other way.
You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
Roll call, moving up 9 and 10.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Motion approved. Number 9 is appeal of a diverse decision of the Zoning and Planning Commission to allow for a frame construction and brick veneer in the exterior wall of a new building in the C2 District, and that's at 11040 South Kilpatrick Avenue. And D is Ordinance 222277. Ordinance granting petitioner MG19 Saloon Suites LTD appeal of the zoning and planning commission's denial of the allowance of a frame construction and brick veneer in the exterior wall of the new building in the C2 District located at 11040 South Kilpatrick, Oklaun, Illinois, and approval of the requested variances. Is the petitioner in the audience?
Yes.
Do you have anything to say or explain to the board on what you want to do there? Could you step up to the microphone?
It's just basically changing the inside skin wall from block to frame. The rest of the building stays exactly the same.
Well, our ordinance just require commercial buildings to be all brick and cinder block, as I understand. Is that correct?
Uh, I do believe so, yeah.
Okay, and you're looking for a variance from that to build a brick veneer?
Yes.
Okay. Is any questions from the board?
No, I've reviewed this with trustee Desmond. We've discussed it, and I understand where we're going and what... You know, I'm ready to make a motion to approve.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
A second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Mallow.
Is this both on 9 and 10?
Yes.
Can we do that?
We have to take both at one time?
Well...
Or we can combine them?
You take it... I'm sorry, take two separate votes on that.
Okay, all right. We're taking a vote on 9?
Number 9.
Okay.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Motion approved. And 10, Ordinance 222277, an ordinance granting the petitioner MG19 Saloon Suites LTD appeal of the zoning and planning commission's denial of the allowance of frame construction and brick veneer in the exterior wall of the new building in the C2 District located at 11040 South Kilpatrick, Oklaun, Illinois. Motion, please.
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Your petition has been approved. Yes. All right, I'm going to move on to the consent agenda. It's rather lengthy. You got it all the way to W. Okay. All items on the consent agenda are routine and brought forward at the direction of the Board of Trustees, village manager, or village committees, and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. A, request Board of Trustees' approval of the Traffic and Safety Committee recommendation to amend the existing parking signage on the north side of 96th Street between Tully and 51st Avenue, along with the west side of 51st Avenue from 96th Street to the cul-de-sac for the specific use of the residence of the multifamily building at 5100 West 96th Street. Motion, please.
Keep going. Keep going. Consent.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes. Ordinance 2222-66, an ordinance approving certain traffic regulations, amending the existing parking signage on the east side of Tully Avenue between 96th Street and Museum Drive to provide six parking spaces dedicated for the sole use of the residence of the Arbor Court condominium. C, request Board of Trustees' approval of the zoning and planning commission's recommendations as six, one vote for a variation of the approval of the pole sign at 5600 5620 West 95th Street in a C2 general service zoning district. D, ordinance 222267, an ordinance granting a variation for the approval of a pole sign at 56... 5620 West 95th Street in a C2 District. E is a request Board of Trustees' approval of the zoning and planning commission's recommendation 52 for a special use permit to allow a special event space in a C3 regional shopping center zone district at 8821 Ridgeland Avenue. And F is ordinance 222268, permit, that special use permit. G, request Board of Trustees' approval of the appeals and review board's recommendation for a one-foot fence height variation to allow a seven-foot tall fence at 10421 South Kedville Avenue. And H is ordinance 222269 to allow for that one-foot increase in the fence. I is a request for Board of Trustees' approval of the appeals and review board's recommendation 41 for a 25-foot corner side yard variation at 5123 West 101st Street. And J is ordinance 222270 permitting that variance. K, ordinance 222271, an ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter IV, Article B, entitled Rates and Charges for the Oklaun Village Code. L, ordinance 222272, an ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter IV, Article B, entitled Water Rates and Charges of the Oklaun Village Code. M, ordinance 222273, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the tax year 2022, collectible during the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2023, and ending December 31st, 2023, for the Village of Oklaun, County of Cook, State of Illinois. And ordinance D, N, is ordinance 222274, an ordinance authorize an abatement of the tax levy for general obligation bonds for the Village of Oklaun, Cook County, Illinois. O, ordinance 222275, an ordinance adopting the 2022 Village Oklaun municipal budget. P, ordinance 222276, an ordinance of the Village of Oklaun, Cook County, Illinois, increasing the 2022 budgeted amount for the police and fire pension funds. Q, ordinance 222271, a resolution approving updates at MABUS Mutual Aid Box Alarm System Agreement to maintain the Village of Oklaun's ability to receive mutual aid for large emergency incidents. R, resolution 222272, a resolution approving Christopher Burke Engineering for professional design and engineering services for 2023 street program. S, resolution 222273, a resolution appointing Dan Green as a replacement for Verden Zoomhagen to the Zone and Planning Commission. T, resolution 222274, a resolution approving the tree pruning and removal services for the year 2023 for the Village of Oklaun, Cook County, Illinois, by Smitty's Tree Services Incorporated. U, resolution 222275, a resolution approving the reversed 457B... Revised 457B investment policy for the Village of Oklaun, Cook County, Illinois. And V, a request Board of Trustees' approval for the appointment of trustee Alex Oliniechak as the Fire Department liaison and trustee Ralph Sack as the Police Department liaison. And W, request Board of Trustees' approval for the cancellation of the last regularly scheduled meeting of December dated December 27th, 2022. A motion, please. So...
Second.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, um, I would like to remove items E and F.
E... E and F, okay.
And I'd like to remove items O and P.
O and P. Anything else? Vote, please, on everything but F. E, F, O, and P.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Motion approved. All right, E, request Board of Trustees' approval of a liquor and tobacco licensing review board's recommendation 7.0 for a change in ownership of a department.
That's not it.
E. Okay, rest quick. Request Board of Trustees' approval of the zoning and planning commission's recommendation 5 to 2 for a special use permit to allow a special event space in a C3 regional shopping center zone district at 8821 Ridgeland Avenue. Motion?
I'm motion to deny.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Motion approved. And F is ordinance 222268, an ordinance granting a special use permit to allow special events, see, space in a C3 regional shopping zone district at 8821 South Ridgeland Avenue. Motion, please.
I'll make a motion to deny.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Motion to deny approved. And O is ordinance 222275, an ordinance adopting the 2023 Village of Oklaun municipal budget. Motion, please.
Uh, I will be making a motion to approve, but I do want to discuss.
Okay, a second? Second? Okay, discussion?
Yeah, I just want to compliment our fine staff and all departments for putting together a very robust budget. They met the goal of no property tax increase. And as we'll get to the next one, a considerable increase in contributing to our pensions. After multiple meetings, a lot of work, I will tell you that it never ceases to amaze me how talented our staff is and the great job that they do. And I just want to let you know, I appreciate all the work that you did from an accounting side and from a fiduciary side to each one of the department heads that put a lot of work into it. I appreciate all the work that not only you do during your regular part of the year, but budget time, especially heading into the projected recessionary economy that we're heading into. I know everybody really did a great job this year, so I appreciate that.
Well, thank you, trustee. And I'd like to just add that this work that we've done and our staff has done with this budget serves this community in a lot of ways. One of them with is we're not increasing any property tax for 2023. Think that's very important for our constituents. We're adding $2 million more to our pension this year than our current funding policy requires. As you know, many municipalities are behind on their pension contributions caused by kicking the can down the road for 30 years. And now the road is coming to an end, and this board is charged with the responsibility of finding ways to bring our pension funding back into line with what it needs to be. And our 2022-23 budget includes more than $6 million for road surfacing programs. Some of our roads were kind of decayed over the last couple of winters as we had some recession problems and funding problems, but we're going to tackle that even more aggressively in 2023. And our Police Department, always a special spot in my heart. We budget more than $1 million this year for our Police Department. So we're increasing that spending over 22 by a million dollars. And this budget doesn't require any borrowing of money or any increase in our debt. So I think, as the trustee Alex has spoken, this was a concerted effort of our staff and our trustees who sat in on these budget hearings to do the best job to maintain the quality of our community, the services which we've all learned to expect, and, most importantly, fund our Police Department and our Fire Department to the max that we can. So I will call for a vote on that, please.
If I could, just one... Hearing the both of you speak, I just wanted to make another point. It is absolutely true that the staff has done a phenomenal job. Department heads, division managers, right on down to the people, you know, digging the ditches and filing the papers. You know, we've talked throughout the year about the difficulties ahead when the economy started to turn, and people here, I do believe, are very appreciative of the fact that we... When you are employed by a government, you have a lot of stability compared to the others in private sector. When the talk of recession goes from possible to likely to almost certain in the last two months, the board members here had asked us to kind of turn the ship to the wind, as we've done in 2007 and 2020 in advance of other downturns. And I'm very pleased that our management staff, our finance people, did just that, knowing that, I think I said at the previous meeting, you know, a lot of times we hear about the labor management or the labor versus ownership issue. When it comes down to it, the people that are paying the village staff salaries are not millionaires and billionaires. Their people, average income in Oklaun is $70,000, average home. So I think and I hope that people are appreciative of the effort that was made here. And I was hoping, and I'm looking at Bill Meyer, our Public Works Director, that we could speak tonight about a labor deal that we struck with Local 150. We are very, very close, but for a minor snag. I wanted just to give a special mention to Bill from our Public Works Department. We're negotiating with all of our labor units, police, fire, and public works. And Local 150, for those familiar with unions, is one of the most powerful unions in the country. They represent heavy machinery operators. They represent our Public Works people. They have some of our records clerk and police, our finance department people. So they have a wide swath of people they represent. And they came to us with some reasonable requests. We went back to them with what we feel are reasonable requests as it relates to overtime and structural deficits. They were, again, I don't want to jinx this, but tentatively speaking, they were understanding what we're trying to accomplish, understanding of the tough road ahead. And, you know, tentatively speaking, I had hoped that we'd have something more definitive, but I am pleased to report that based on the efforts of our Public Works Director and Brett from 150 and Jim Sweeney, the leader of 150, it was just, it was really... It was gratifying to know that we had a partner on either side, knowing the struggles that we have ahead. So I'm hopeful we're going to get the same way with our other bargaining units. And, you know, let's just hope that the recession that likely hits next year is short and shallow and not deep and long. But that's all I have this evening.
Now, Mr. Mayor, could I just go into... One of the things that this village and this board has done a very good job is we see a lot of adverse things going on with infrastructure and other communities. And I will tell you that we, as a board, in 17 years, have stayed steady in the course of making sure that we address our aging infrastructure. And we are actually ahead of the curve on our infrastructure. And I just want to say that, again, we have a very robust budget to handle that. So there's a lot of layers into this contract. But when you see people that have aging infrastructure that is falling apart and are looking for help to get that taken care of, and we, as a board, have addressed that with great advice from our staff, I just think that that's another underlying positive in this whole budget. So I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, trustee. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for the vote.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechek.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Motion passes. And then P, ordinance twenty-two-twenty-two-seventy-six, that's an ordinance of the Village of Oklaun, Cook County, Illinois, increasing the two thousand twenty-two budgeted amount for the police and fire pension funds.
I will be, I'll be making a motion to approve, but I would like to discuss.
A second?
Second.
Discussion?
Well, we always talk about the fine job that our people do here in the Village of Oklaun, and every position here is pensionable, and especially our police and our fire department. And for as long as I've been on the board, there's always been the discussion about pensions and funding the pensions. And again, we, as a board, have come together with great advice and are putting two million dollars more than we are required to show the faith in our dedication to our people who take care of us every day, that we are making sure that we fund their pensions, that we make sure that they have what they worked a lifetime for, that they could look forward to that. And I know that that is going to continue to happen. And I know that not too many other municipalities around us, when you take a look at pension funding and how adverse it is, have taken the stance that this village board has taken, not in just one budget, but multiple budgets, but again, in difficult times, are letting the people that have retired and are do this benefit for the hard work that they put in, that we are making a stronger commitment to make sure that that money is there and will continue to be. So I think it's very, very important that, you know, our staff does a phenomenal job, and especially our police and our fire department. And again, going above and beyond to make sure that we are showing them that we are committed to them in their retirement is a big, big statement to all of our labor, especially our police. I am voting for this and I'm very happy. And again, I congratulate our staff for doing a great job of it.
Thank you, trustee. Roll call. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechek.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Motion approves. We will move on to the village clerks' report.
We have disbursement resolution number twenty-two-two-dash-twenty-two-D dated December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two in the amount of fifteen million, seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-three cents.
Thank you. Motion, please?
Motion to pay the bills.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechek.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Motion passes. General village matters?
Just to wish everyone a happy holiday.
Well, thank you, that's important. Okay, the village president's report. A is a request Board of Trustees' approval of a liquor and tobacco license review board's recommendation for a Class AV liquor license for the arena lanes, forty-seven-hundred West one-hundred-third Street. A motion, please?
Motion to approve.
A second?
Second.
Discussion?
I'd just like to say one thing, mayor. I just want to thank Bill Bard and his family for fifty-plus years of what they've done over there at Arena. I grew up in that district, I bowled at that bowling alley in leagues for many years, and I was a little kid bowling in there. My kids still bowl there. You've done a great job with that, and I'm sure the new owner will keep it up. But I just wanted to thank you for everything you've done over the last several years in your family. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. And if I could add to that, you know, I grew up just a little ways from your dad when he built that bowling alley. I think I was about six or seven years old when I bowled my first game. I can remember it was fifteen cents. But oh, what a fortune! So I only could bowl two lanes, thirty cents. But you've been a, you've been an institution in this village. Your history, your family's history has made this village a better place. So as you move on to retirement, I wish you the best and thanks for your whole family's contributions to Oklaun. Here I can, a motion, please, has been made. A second, can I get a roll call?
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechek.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
A motion approved. B, ordinance twenty-two-twenty-two-seventy-eight, an ordinance changing ownership of the Class AV liquor license issued by the Village of Oklaun and decrease and increase the Class AV liquor license issued by the Village of Oklaun for arena lanes. Motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechek.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Motion approved. Congratulations, sir, and congratulations to the new owners. I know I'm going to be bowling there, but I won't be paying fifteen cents a week. Okay, thank you, thank you both. C is a request Board of Trustees' approval of a liquor and tobacco license review board's recommendations for a change in ownership of the tobacco license for Good Luck Jerry Incorporated Famous Tobacco. And ordinance twenty-two-twenty-two-seventy-nine, an ordinance changing ownership of the tobacco license issued by the Village of Oklaun for Good Luck Jerry Doing Business as Famous Tobacco, ninety-six-hundred South Cicero Avenue. Motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Mallow.
Again, are we voting on both C?
Uh, C.
Yes.
C first.
C first. Yes.
Okay.
Trustee Oliniechek.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
And D, ordinance twenty-two-twenty-two-seventy-nine, motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechek.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Motion passes. E is a request for Board of Trustees' approval for liquor license review board's recommendation for a change in ownership of a tobacco license for one, Star One Tobacco, forty-seven-oh-one West one-hundred-third Street. Motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechek.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Motion passes. F, ordinance twenty-two-twenty-two-eighty, an ordinance changing ownership of the tobacco license issued by the Village of Oklaun, Star One Tobacco, forty-seven-oh-one West one-hundred-third Street. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Trustee Mallow.
Roll call.[1667.25]